Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay folks, it's 6 o'clock. We're here for Town Hall for a hearing first and then the regular Select Board meeting. So I will call them the Hearing Preorder. I'm going to read a little script here. officially opening the public hearing, town Rockhamans amended zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations, Rockham Select Board is hoping this public hearing can receive testimony on those proposed changes. As background, the Planning Commission revised the zoning bylaws over the summer. The Planning Commission also revised the subdivision regulations but for administrative purposes only. Basic clerical edits which did not change the regulations. Planning Commission developed reports that summarize all changes and Rebecca has copies if anyone is interested and maybe adds the original bylaws there if anybody wants to look at them. They can make a quick up Town Hall here. Bylaw, the Select Board is required to hold a public hearing and Planning Commission was also required to hold a public hearing. This may seem daunting to people but because our land use regulations impact landowners, it is purposely slow, thoughtful, and deliberative process. Purpose of the hearing is only to receive public input on proposed changes. If there are questions, we will try to answer them. We also have the Planning Commission Chair Bonnie North and Town Planner Chuck Wies in attendance to answer the more difficult questions. The Select Board will not make any decisions during the public hearing. We will reserve our deliberations until the next meeting which follows the public hearing. As a Chair, we'll close the public hearing once we have received all available public testimony and then intervene in the regular meeting. I encourage all hearing participants to participate in this meeting. On the agenda will be discussion of the public hearing's input. Based on this input, we will either adopt the zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations on our meeting tonight or make small revisions and adopt them as amended, table and adopt at a future meeting or we will remand the documents back to the planning commission for further review and revisions. Now now open the meeting to comments. So anyone have any questions? I don't know if anybody's even had a chance to look at this on the web. No questions? Not even for the... Chuck, do you have any comments you want to make or maybe we could open somebody up?
(laughing)
Or not necessarily, no?
Yes sir, maybe I have a question but I was hoping to hear a little bit of what the bylaw changing tells since I haven't really learned how to educate myself yet in this town about what goes on.
Okay, there is a copy there of the zoning regulation. I'm sure you probably haven't seen it, it was about an inch thick. But they are on the website so you can go on rockv.org and they are listed there. I imagine you're not the only one who has not looked at them. So we use the board hat because we got them as they progressed. So if you have any questions, most of the changes were done with clerical revisions in the wording and some of the stuff, but some of the zoning areas were changed, you know, I want S2 and the whole thing, some of those regulations were changed. And I think Chuck and Bonnie can answer those questions if you can anything.
Yeah, we can just give a general overview. The industrial district, the I-14 district, which is the island essentially, the uses were expanded in coordination with the economic development folks to encourage development on the island. So that was one thing. Then there were technical amendments with parking, as Peter was saying. Height restrictions, we did have specific numbers previously that were based on fire truck capabilities, but now we amended it to say that the fire department has to approve the proposal, whatever it is, because there might be ways other than just having a clear number that we can provide for fire protection. So that seems a practical thing to do. And there used to be a historic design committee and that's not necessary anymore. That function is handled by the Design Review Board.
I thought that was a good summary. Blaine, I would also encourage you to attend our Planning Commission. In the past in our conversations, like you're like a Planning Commissioner with the questions you ask, so please do attend our meetings.
Yeah, they're open to public all time. And so then you can hear the kind of back and forth deliberations that go into coming up and discussing projects.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, and even the board? Hearing done. There are some sort of motions on the queue. If someone would like to make a motion one way or the other, please do sign it.
Yes, I'm sorry, we have to close the hearing first and then the board discusses it.
Well, then if there's no more comments, someone just came in. Are you here for the zoning and planning report?
Yeah, the report.
Okay.
Sorry.
Right. Then we will now close the hearing seeing there are no comments from the public and we'll take it up from later. Don't come here for the first item. So that being done, I would like to call the regular Select Board meeting to order. There will be any additions to the agenda for working ministry matters and to pressing matters that require ratification in a future meeting.
I have none.
Board? None. Approved minutes of October 15, 2019.
So.
You made second. Will you make second to adopt the minutes of October 15? Any comments, questions, instructions, additions?
There's a couple and we got other business. I believe it was I asked about the mining of the Cito. Peter, go ahead.
Sign done. All those in favor of approving minutes of October 15 will say aye. All those opposed will say nay. Public comment, I was not on the agenda. Any public comments? Sign done. Hearing done. We'll move on to the Judiciary Board.
Okay. What's up on it? Burr Blake is on schedule. Sidewalks have been completed for the winter. They will be finished on Blake when work resumes in late April 2020, Weather Committee. The taking is happening today and tomorrow. The walkthrough with the funders is on Thursday. So I know you wanted particularly to know about that project. The patch in front of 7-Eleven, the patch was completed today. It didn't happen the way we had hoped it would happen, but the road is open. I forwarded to all of you a letter from T.J. Donovan regarding opioid litigation where he's recommending that Vermont Towns not opt out. The deadline for that decision is November 22nd, so if you want to make a decision on that or if you want to discuss it, it can happen at the 19th meeting. So you don't need to bring it up, but just a heads up. So let me or Peter know if you do want to discuss that. On Thursday, this Director of Mar, there's a meeting with the Community Development Board, the State Board, which oversees spending of the Vermont Community Development Program. And as you know, you approved a submittal of substantial merit for the TLR buildings. And I'll be attending that hearing with Gary Fox and Isaac Wagner. Skeeto will be ready for the winter, so happy new year. Ice rink is going to happen this month. Adult volleyball and K-46 youth basketball registration continues. And we will have a rental property owners' meeting November 20th at noon. We sent invitations, but you don't need an invitation to attend. It's a lunchtime meeting. Won't be serving a whole lunch, but we'll have refreshments, but you can round bag it. The domino from the U.S. Attorney's Office is going to be there to talk about how you can structure a lease to minimize illegal drugs on your property, so that's obviously of interest. And Wyndham Winter Housing Trust will be there to ask owners how they can structure programs to financially help private them rather than to publicly subsidize them. So that's a reason to attend. So please show up. Actually, this room on the 20th. Parking permits are needed this month, November. You can get them at the clerk's office and then Friday afternoons when the clerk is closed, you can get them at the manager's office. Just a reminder about the VCRD community visit. There's a meeting, planning meeting tomorrow. Then the big community meetings will happen in December and January, so watch out for those. And the Select Board will be meeting with the Walpole Select Board on Thursday at 6:30 at the Walpole Town Hall. And that's it.
Anything for the board? Wonder elevator?
I hope soon. The Lula, it's crazy. I mean, it's good that both elevators didn't fail at the same time. And we are ADA compliant because we can, people can use the regular elevator to come up here, but it's frustrating.
That they don't know or are waiting for her or?
No, we have heard the part, which was mainly, I don't know if you've got a chance to check on it.
They're estimating about two weeks, but we'll call again tomorrow and just get another update.
And just for the public, the elevator that we're talking about is the Lula, which is the elevator that goes between the street level and the basement level. The main elevator that reaches the other floors is mine. That is great.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda. The first item is the zoning with check lies and its consideration and amended zoning bylaws, subdivision regulations. As I mentioned earlier, there are suggested motions, so to get that discussion started, I think we need a motion to set it on the board. Someone will make a motion which way we want it all.
I make a motion to adopt the revised zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations as presented?
Second.
Okay, seconded discussion.
The only thing, we've covered everything in detail. This is a process that I hope every year we approach the board for. I want to make sure that these are living documents, they're adapted as need arises, that I'm not going to just show up every 10 years and do that. So don't be surprised if I show up this time next year with an additional set of amendments. Thankfully, we have the Development Review Board and has also been pointing out inconsistencies with the bylaws and just many eyes made for, you know, a more thoughtful, like this is really not working out well for us kind of thing. So hopefully this becomes an annual procedure and just constantly.
Bonnie, you have anything to say here?
No, no really.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, motion made seconded to adopt the zone regulations as presented. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, or if you care. Second item, there's a nuisance ordinance first reading. It's in your packet. I have read it, there's nobody else has. It does cover all the stuff that I had done in my first draft, only a bit more concise and leaves a lot of covering of it that I had originally turned it, but I think I had about 10 pages. Quite more, but it's more concise, so it does cover everything. So anyone have any questions? I was gonna, maybe that's why you're here.
No, I just want to make sure that there's any questions and I'm gonna, you know, a property owner, a budding issue that needs to be addressed and this is the way we're going to get to the end of it. You know, we realize there's time constraints and it probably won't happen until the spring or summer, but it has to be addressed. It's ridiculous. So we're just here to say you guys are heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, now this gets adopted in six days on opposite.
After second reading.
After second reading.
Yeah, second reading. And just we'll have, just a couple of things. This has been reviewed and amended by attorney. And we had during the public hearing or public presentation, we developed a flowchart. We'll have the amended flowchart for you at second reading because that will help you understand the process. There's a public remedy that's important to note now included in the process. And there's also a ticket process. So there's really two alternate routes for enforcement. And just one helpful thing about this ordinance is having this in place will let us apply for funding for votes, to have a fund for people who are not able to afford to improve their properties. Having this in place will allow us to get public funding for that, which is pretty important because our folks want to improve their properties but are just financially unable to.
Any questions? Board? Three members, no action to be taken until the second reading, so we'll move on through...
There is amendment.
You gotta make a motion.
I'm gonna... Just, it's done.
I'm hoping to approve the nuisance light in downtown or abandoned property owners as proposed. Second.
Motion's made seconded. Any further discussion?
If it's scheduled for a second reading, why would you move it now? I thought you had said adopt on first reading. No, you don't.
Well, that's what I was moving around.
Okay. I was gonna get where it's at.
That's what I thought, was the first reading and then the second reading, that's when you adopt it.
Okay.
Because we had to remand it back to them.
Right.
We're moving to adopt it, so we think we need to...
To not do it.
Recall that motion in the second.
Or just not vote on it?
You wait for all the votes?
Do we need to? Or there's not a vote on it?
I don't think we don't have a vote on it.
Yeah, I mean it's... I don't think it was, it would hurt.
I reject my motion.
Did you reject the second?
I reject the second.
Because in the second reading, if they have chime between the first and the second, if they have any touchy or thinks things need to be amended or changed to their own satisfaction, they won't have a chance to do it if they move it now. They won't change it later.
But it never got voted on.
It never got voted on. Right, your motion, you know. That's why I'm saying is that the first reading is your first full board presentation of everything. If you have considerations afterwards and you move it now, you won't have a chance.
There you go. On the table, let's move to public board for Levan Hammond. High Street, Laurel Avenue, Grand Lane, line three.
Thank you all for your work on the... All your... You're going to address the whole works.
Don't take it personally, just give them a story.
All right, we'll jump right into it. Okay, High Hill, you probably experienced the demo there for High Hill, Laurel Avenue drain line. We're not sure how long it's been in, but this stone in that line with the entrapping grit gravel from, that is getting to the screens. So we tried to clean that out with using Hartigan. They had some success. Some of the stuff they look at trying all the other ways, but when that outfitted our guys, you go up in there and actually pull big stones out. We're not, we're not talking about a big event, it's large enough so the tractor truck cannot pull through. You get, he did get a lot of, a lot of rocks that would have swallowed it. So we put a break on Hartigan, put a special budget, you know, not mounting footage to we came up with a better plan. And I think, you know, I've seen borings happen from different companies in the past where they actually happened sometimes. Send a guy up a pipe, it's boring, gets stuck, they gotta hand shovel things out. My next caller was a boring company, N.A. Minaj, Mike Lasson, which we used to, he used to work for Hartigan as the main pipe guy that used to do TVM plus flushing and all that stuff. He ran through. He knows a lot about pipe and he said, yes, they can do that. They can outfit their guys, they come down to enter the pipe. So they got two guys entering the pipe, then the back to truck. It's not cheap, $5,000 a day. We're not sure how long it'll take. So what, maybe five days we'll do it. You know, we've got a start basically, we're gonna be at Laurel Avenue and High Hill, starting at that intersection right there, watching, they'll then be going up High Hill, pulling it down so you get gravity working, helping out, grab your pool water away from here so that it continue down. And see what we can do. It's five days worth.
Because you're gonna be running water in the line when they're trying to do this, I assume that.
Yeah, there is running water. So he's got, a lot of that running water is then sucked up and you can't actually then, he's got to periodically dump. So there's water being run, correct? It's the only way they move it. And then once he gets to this stagnant, still point, stagnant point there, you want to send a guy up the line. So it's all working together, it will be working with fire part because they'll have to fill out a... The fire part will not be doing any work, will be doing the rescues if something does happen. So all right, Dr. Chee, about that.
But this probably is not gonna, will make the possibility of flooding at that point. I mean, it really, I mean, it's gonna help alleviate the situation, but it's still not gonna...
No, actually, the flooding that's been happening is when the great poles are often stripped off. With some quick down surge, when the banks collapsing, that comes down and, you know, I know Mike's out there periodically when you have high intensive rain, but it was February 2016. He was out there prior to that happen, that happened, but even now, heavy rains, you know, he was out there last week when we had it.
But what's gonna prevent this from occurring in the future? I live up there, some of these, you're on the High Hill, I don't know, must be 10 inches in between, so someone rocks your dog, I don't know.
Right.
Is there a type of screen you can go on there?
We can look at that, see if there's any kind of, you know, another welding system we could put on face phone the other way, so the grain ounce is slotted straight, so maybe we can put in a, make it more square. And I know they do want to get the water through there.
Right, I'm looking for something that probably wouldn't, you know, catch a lot of leaves, but I mean, and that does a problem.
Right, and it wasn't only great too, so some of this could happen from the old great. It may have been around, you know, with the pipes for 30 years. We don't know that.
Right, Mike did think that it happened before the current grate was put in.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Comments? Mr. Tom.
So what other way could it be there besides just putting two men in there and hiring this company?
One guy had it, I haven't seen it lately, but there was, go back to Olden, Hootie had a script. There was a grappling type hooking system. I checked, I checked around, I could not find a way with that, anybody even that still had it, probably better run it. This is something that goes back years, probably the company up in Chesterford did some work, but they're long out of business, they probably had that kind of stuff. But that was my first thought, is there a way? And then the one, one of the elderly truck drivers that was running backwards, remember a system out there, he hadn't seen it around even years.
How long is the?
About 200 feet. For the run that goes, look at the...
It's a, it's a metal idea, but I don't know.
Metal floor gear?
No, that's, that's not. That's the one, we get to the next step. It's concrete, which is good because actually it's smoother flow, it's smoother bottom, so once you start the material flowing, you can actually move it. So it's 200 feet from High Hill to that turn point, so this section going up High Hill. And then it is over to Pam's House at the corner wells, probably like 400 feet. We don't know all that is, you know, because I suspect it has further to go, the pipe flaps out, you'll probably see the larger stones drop out, so then the back to actually service, the back to truck may work better further down to go. So it might be totally 600 feet.
I think some of the cost involved in that is, is it safe and fine space, correct?
It is, yeah.
A lot is.
And our fire department, last we knew, correct, if they're wrong, our train for defined spaces.
Yeah, for the rest of the...
So the 400 feet, has nothing videoed or anything, so you can't really confirm that there's anything in there.
Yeah, we know this stuff here, but they go down, they go down little ways, but we have not, we didn't get the whole thing though. That's correct.
Yeah, that actually backed all the way up to Russell Street.
Could, could we, have you considered videoing the whole thing?
Right now you can't get the machine through there.
You tried to, they videoed as far as they could.
The little tiny one that Best Septic's got?
Yeah, if you could get them on top of layer, then we maybe tried to shove it there, but we know this material later needs to come out, so we didn't waste too much time because we know it's there. Right, we've been using it for years, that little one they got from the lighter truck bringing things out down there, that's pretty handy.
So how's this gonna affect the budget?
Hopefully not, you know, it's really, I'm not gonna say it won't, we'll know towards the spring. If we're over budget because of this and it's a rough winter, then I guess that might come out of a budget surplus.
So what is trying to...
We're not trying to do that though.
Budget surplus for that, that amount?
Do we have approximately 560 hours under the highway?
560?
We're very fun.
But we expect this to not...
Maybe we should budget for it. It kinda seems like we're getting dropped, this dropped, it could have been there for years, but all of a sudden they want to do it right now. And I don't like, we'll do everything we can to remain within the budget. Why don't we plan ahead for this rather than be presented and have to act?
Well, if we get a big chance.
What's that?
If we get a big storm.
It's been like that.
I know, it doesn't play. Yeah, well, correct.
It's not like that we need to fix it right now and approving that amount, I think is also odd, I think. If someone's out watching the meeting or reads the article, do you think they're gonna do it in two days if they know they gotta approve for five days worth of money?
No, they're gonna work, work by the day, despite all the state, we're gonna, we're gonna take, we're gonna be working as, you know, expeditionally as you can to get as much material as we can out of there.
But what happens if it goes beyond five days?
Well, it will, we'll be, we'll be better off if we're more, we can budget for us, but we need to get a start on it, you know, and then we'll have a better idea once we get five days worth of material out of there, and maybe we'll do it by. Then we can bigger tape, you know, more air into bigger tape through there, see what we can get.
But if they can get it done in three, we'll make, we'll make sure they don't waste time. I think that the concern is that they'll take the five days even if it only needs three days. That's the concern.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think if you, if a company, I don't know, it seems weird, we always announce how much we have to spend and then the bids are miraculously right around what we announce.
Well, we got this bid before we had, before we had the dollar amount to present to you.
Per day, that number.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
The hard thing, if we approve that much money, what you're asking for in five days worth, then I don't think that a company would be motivated to finish it in two days if they think there's five days worth of money.
No, he's only got scheduled five days. If it takes three, that's the way they, these guys work, it takes three, they're done. And Hartigan, for example, that's a company we hired to clean catch basins and bigger tape lines and everybody there. So it's up to us, you know, Mike's out there periodically, the other guys are always, you know, working with him to make sure we get the production out of it. We put the brakes on them because, on Hartigan, because the production wasn't there, because they were trying to just use a back truck to clean this line with all the, all the big rocks in there.
And like Seven's question, I mean, what's to prevent it from happening again? Maybe we should have a remedy before we fix it and happen again? The grates are gonna allow those same things?
Well, there's some conversation in here too, what replacing one 200-foot corrugated drain pipe is enough.
That's the next...
That's for the next meeting, but yes.
But it's impossible in High Hill.
And last, about a year ago, there was a shortage, it was a shortage, guys had some programs they were trying to get out there, or systems like the BRRRR. So I went up to that meeting a lot earlier to see if we can get, you know, the type seven and say, hey, we've got a serious problem with that BRRRR that needs some serious attention, but we didn't, we weren't selected for that. You know, they were looking for problem areas throughout the state. So it's a problem area, but it's not, you know, we can stay with it because they keep throwing a lot of this money out there and there's a lot of grant money out there. So Mike will find a permanent solution for the stream itself, but unfortunately we've got the banks that when they fail, they fail, they're real steep banks. And, you know, we did a redemption bond, a redemption bond over there, maybe look for another area, for another redemption bond.
But in any event, this stuff needs to come out.
It does, yeah.
No matter what the ultimate solution is, this stuff needs to come out. And we believe that the grate that's there now would not allow this kind of accumulation to happen, right? That's what Mike, that's what I understood from Mike.
Yeah.
You're still gonna get though, isn't that grate up there like about six inch?
Yeah, you'll get some stuff, but this is bigger.
You're not gonna prevent all of it from going out of there, but...
Right, right.
The good thing about it all though, when we're split, we're the two circles, I don't know if you're looking at this one, but the two circles come together where that overlap is. So there's a, probably a 48-inch pipe or 36-inch pipe that splits and heads over toward senior hall. So which is unusual, usually you don't see a drain line splitting in any different direction, so it don't, they all split the other way, but that's got some degree of everything too, so it all happened in that sort of area.
And that's, but that's not the fault of the system, right?
Well, probably not, if we can, what we get out, Mike, here in five days, we go well. But we have a support ace, if we're not gonna have one, we can get it all, if we can block it out of there.
Okay, what's your thoughts, you guys? Are you coming from the public first, huh?
I have one comment, I'll assume the amount of 25,000 would be 55 days. You have a party you want to bid for that, do you have multiple proposals, just one?
Yeah, we talked about that 20 night.
Was that part of your policy?
Again, the problem is, is you likely to find anybody who knew this type of work, because it's gotta be someone that's trained to enter the bike, just ruled out Hardigan, that's, that's one of the main guys. When we put out the bid, by the time we get all of this back, it'll be into December, you start talking low, you know, 10, 10-degree type temperatures, they can't do work, because it's all flowing water.
So we've known it was a problem for a long time, right? Isn't that what was said?
Yeah, and...
Since way back before it flooded?
I know, I know, that's why...
This whole area's been a problem for years, for 30, 40 years, we haven't known, Mike is speculating it could have been there 30 years, we don't know that, the material in the line, we don't know that for sure.
When did we start to think that it might have been there for multiple years?
Um, ask them, I think probably they split them all.
Probably when it got scoped, but, but we worked this summer to try to clear the block in the normal way, the back to back.
That's what it's all about, it's our way.
Okay, but that didn't work, so that's why we're here now.
Yeah.
I'm gonna think of probably the last 20 years, three times where it's actually flooded to the point where you had at least three feet of water up there, pretty well streaming up for the back. Yeah.
You remember, I think at one point, almost up to your place.
It was, the last one was, actually, I looked out, about midnight, damn, it was all shiny, figured it was ice going, all ice, shit, no, it was about two feet of water. So, I mean, didn't take long, and I was on the high side.
That's winter, winter.
Yeah, that was in 1950, that one year.
Yeah.
And we, in the summer, we were, falls, falls, and then the boat, there down there was a boat, and I think even North Paulup came over the boat.
Okay, folks, there's a recommendation there, I need a motion to move this along.
Well, I'll, I'll recommend the town of Rockingham, contract out with A. N. McNosh for up to five days at $5,000 a day, for a total of 25,000, reference to High Hill, Loroad, drain line cleaning.
We hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Again, I reiterate what Tom was saying, the 11th hour, I do understand in retrospect too, that if he goes through this narrow process, he'd be lucky to have something by the first of January to actually be ready to hit the ground, and I don't think anyone's gonna be up there doing that in January.
He said, I asked him today.
I think we should have started earlier with planning. It didn't need to be the 11th hour, we're presented with one number.
No, I understand that.
And rushing for cold weather, it's been a problem this whole time, we should have been looking into ways to solve it.
What was his response to being here in January?
It's, you're pushing it with the, right now, we schedule for, toward the end of, just before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So, no, with time's a drop, you can't do it, unless you know real about emergency, you know, say if someone had something that really plugged up.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to go out and do that process, this process, but, you know, like you said, it was February, and this happened last time, if I remember correctly, so it wasn't the winter, so, I mean, if we don't do something now, we get a lot of rain.
Yeah, it was there, yeah.
We could, we'll have a...
Here, it was flooding all the same.
There's a lot of...
Any further discussion? The motion's made in second, is it, we contracted A. N. McNosh for up to five days, 20, $5,000 a day for a total of 28,000? All those people would say aye?
Aye.
All those polls, say aye, motion passes? Now we get the fun stuff, budget discussion, folks, so. I assume that the, and, and that's information to pass out?
Yes, yes, and it is the fun stuff.
Yes.
Things are fun, fun, but it's coming online here. It's not high rate.
So, okay, so this is, like, an updated version of the general, I'll be doing more stuff later, but this is where, the, this is updated from what you had last week, is... There's just a couple of changes in there highlighted. And so Malcolm is first. Good, do you mind, do you wanna come up here and do this, or whatever? I seem to work. Man, you've no introduction? Um, I, honestly, if I could just say one thing, I think our cemeteries are absolutely beautiful, I mean, one thing I was struck by, by me having, when I came here and just started driving around, is just how beautiful some cemeteries are, so thank you for your work.
They had a little setback this year, but...
Well, and you have very high standards, but, but, to, to the, you know, maybe, I mean, they're just beautiful.
And, and...
You very much do, but... So what page?
Page 13.
The paper we have?
Professor Dean.
Yeah.
And it's all cemeteries, but did you wanna...
Yeah.
The last page of the... So it's basically level funded, um, actually completely level funded. Yeah, there's no changes.
That was important. When did we change to only trimming around the headstones? Every other moment, whatever? This past, before I was?
Yeah, well, probably.
It was before I was, yeah.
I think so. What happened was, um, in the middle, somebody's car track, they drove out, and then they, they rebid the same, the same person rebid at a much higher rate, in, in order to, and then got upset and quit again. So, in order, figuring that it was gonna be at a higher rate, in order to keep it pet, so I didn't go over my budget, we eliminated string trimming, every other mowing, in order to keep the cost down, hopefully to keep it at where we were originally. And it, it did the trick.
Yeah.
At first, it didn't look very good, but once they got the idea of, it's new people doing it, but once they got the idea of it, it's better now, it's, it's, I will, Eric Clark did a tremendous job, and it's not up to his standards even now, but they're, they're trying, they're working towards that goal. I don't know if I'm gonna get Eric Clark's in that whole book. But, I actually was speaking to Eric today, he picked up, he was up to my house, and he said that it was just, too much for him, because of trying to keep out, and roll everything that's in them.
And if you have any recommendations?
No, I just, as long as we're not hearing any complaints on...
Well, we've had a few complaints since then. It started off very rough.
Yeah.
It's gotten a little better, and, I'm hoping, it's, it's for one year, we don't necessarily have to redo it, and, but it's also, there's not a lot of people that want to do that much.
Well, I'm not necessarily just talking about that, just the, they're, they're not getting trimmed as often.
That's right, they're not, they're every other time, but...
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything about the company that's doing that.
No, no.
I'm saying as far as when we changed here.
Right.
Are we getting any complaints about not being trimmed regularly?
Well, not, we, we are getting complaints about it, because it was not only not getting trimmed regularly, it wasn't well done when it was done at first, they couldn't better at it, and that's a big, you, you do this sort of work, so you know it's a big job, string trimming.
So do you think there's enough money to, to move forward this year, Dennis, to find a company, or do you think we need more money?
Well, we're...
Is that the problem, the money or time, you think folks would...
Well, we actually had one person that bid on, we had four bids, I think, the last time, and one of them actually bid over $100,000 for the show. We're nowhere near that, although you can see what it is, and, and I think if Eric Clark, if I was talking to Eric, I think he would say that the $100,000 is fair, I don't think we can afford to do that, I'm kind of conservative about how I spend money, trying to make, and I think probably the answer is to give this guy another chance for one more year, and, and the way we set this up, because we didn't know who we were gonna end up with, was one year at the top to start with, and then when Eric was going, we would give him for three, it would be a three-year contract. And if this works out, maybe it'll get to a three-year contract, but it'd have to be a little better than it was this year, but if it matters, I'm gonna...
Yeah.
It's a big job.
Oh, yeah.
And to be honest, the first time I heard it, I was thinking it was you.
I'm paying everyone that's on cemeteries.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna happen, yeah, I was thinking of you as most of...
Right.
But then you can help us craft the contracts, and there was a feeling too, so...
Yeah, you do quite a lot of that work yourself, so you wouldn't know a lot about how that works. So you wouldn't do cemeteries at all, now you can put $100,000?
No, because I have a full-time job down in Los Angeles.
Less than that.
Well, if you get $100,000, you might not do that full-time job.
Benefit's all there, there's a...
Right, right. Any other questions for Malcolm, on board? Okay, that's it. You're free there, Malcolm.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, yes, we move on to listeners, or...
Uh, yeah, the listeners aren't here yet, so let's do our creation. Yeah.
You got a big team there.
Yeah.
Get my doc, no, I'm proud of the sense.
Huh?
Get my doc, I'm proud of it.
No, no, I work for Bellis, oh, come on.
So recreation expenses from page 10, whether you want to do revenue first?
The page?
But expenses from page 10, and recreation revenue page two.
So what would you revenue first? Is that a page or...
That one, page two?
Yeah, page two.
Nice.
Which is level funded. So we're bringing you the straightforward ones tonight, or at least first two at least. So the only issue, and we talked about that in Saturday meeting we had, was just to make sure we have the right numbers in the different day camps, so...
Why are we making more on secondary day camp?
Always have.
I don't know, other than, hang on, I just...
That's for the younger kids, the older, I don't think older kids. That's more like, uh...
No, it's, like, you see, I haven't actually got with me.
So the parents don't wanna, they're self-honored, it's all still a bit more. But we're trying to bring back more of the adventure camp, you know, once a week, try to go all hiking trips, fishing trips, fishing trips, stuff like that, to bring some of those fifth and sixth, done for years, and eight, nine, 10, like, no way, I'll not do that. Okay, wanna go page 10 for...
Will we have the increase for, if, as far as is the estimated change?
Which is a placeholder, as we talked about before.
Not guaranteed, but it's a placeholder.
And is that, this minimum wage goes again next year?
Oh, yeah.
So, is that better than that for the daily, daily, uh...
Right.
Yeah, so, um, the 2% for the recreation director, and then the other 2% is a placeholder, because for half of the year, we'll have the, um, increase to 1098, and then we're not sure what the increase will be the second half of the year yet, so if estimating roughly the same, for minimum wage, so the minimum wage will go up guaranteed, I think, probably.
Overall, it's a 1% increase, so... And hopefully we'll get the recreation committee going again too, so we can talk more about programming.
But so actually, for everyone other than the director, this isn't, um, this is gonna be a mandatory increase, because they're all at the minimum wage.
Yeah, we'll have control over the hours, but not the rate. Do you want us to go through the items?
No.
Are you guys good?
Pretty good.
What about the SPO, like, actual FY19? And we budgeted, it wasn't open in 18, was it? Yeah, we budgeted, where'd that money go, why can't we just carry that for 21?
Yeah, I think.
So we came in under budget, correct?
These are unaccommodated, are you talking about FY19?
Actuals, man, you know.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't, there's other charges to make, but it looks like we came in, according to this, $500 over budget. But that's not the final number, but overall...
Essentially, like, $1,100 over budget, if you budgeted 600 for SPO, never spent it, you came in 500 over.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at the 169, 450 versus the 169, 950. But, um, general, which this is a part of, came in under budget in expenses, so, we just don't know to what extent yet, because it's, the audit's incomplete.
And these SPO designs, I can... There's gotta be a couple minor things, this little code, you can put together, run it through, did it pass? Yeah, it's gonna work. Pass broken on there, uh...
The lights all work?
All the brand new lights work, lowers and overs, when I put the, put the bulbs in that, we get shooting out every year up there, they go up there and lit one too, and shoot all the ones up off top.
But they won't do that this year.
What about the light in the tree? That discussion?
The lights in the tree?
The lights that mounted in the tree?
No one will touch them, because, uh...
The left, the left-hand side?
Yeah, left side, left-hand side, the list, they'll be like that until they stop working, it's like maybe 40% of them work, but although, I put brand new lights on every single pole on it right now, so it was like every other pole, but now I put like, brand new lights all the way up, so if I can, there's another set of lights at the, for the wheel that turns it back in, at the last wheel, and so it's actually more lit than it was on previous, so it should be a lot better. Um, new rope on it, so just gotta make a couple modifications, put a couple emergency lights up, exit signs, and about it.
Did they ever say to treat the rope, rope, or something?
Nope, it's, it's treated with, it's like, it has a UV protective coat on it already, to help it for not getting killed by the sun, and hang it up. We'll, we'll usually get like, it's on, uh, two to three, maybe four years, on... We'll usually get like, it's on two to three, maybe four years on, on much juice. So this had usually about three years, you need to get it, get it three years. That was about three years ago when I got that. Twenty-four hundred foot rope. It's about, I would say, I forget how it was right around. I was gonna say it's almost...
Four, five hundred?
Seven or something.
I was thinking six. Yeah, I was thinking six thousand.
And seven rope every three years and...
Yeah. It's a co-op, and it's still like, one of the closest companies that's at Gander that brings that out in one lane. So I don't have to, I get it one lane, so I don't have to pay for two splices, because there'd be like around a thousand dollars a splice. He does it, so I just do one, so it's a lot cheaper that way. This headlight brings one big ball, ball, twenty-four hundred feet. The ropes are inching one eighth, so that's a, it's a good size of rope. And it's good to have extra case, someone does cut it, so then I have extra rope to sit there to splice in, so that anyone does damage it. But I have plenty of rope left over.
And how are the trails coming along?
The trail there are fine. Uh, didn't bother the, uh, the bowman of the hill. The town guys are gonna finish up around the garden, that was still there. They got the fence down on the garden, they're gonna mow that, and it's gonna be all set. But it's good, Nick, you can still walk up the hill right now. You're gonna walk on it pretty good. Footprints all in the mud, here and there, so we'll clean the garden too. So they're gonna be kicking it. Other than that, you can sign up right now for basketball, we've got good numbers, you can have four teams. Got volleyball, you got six, seventeen, two of you for volleyball, so you'll be good.
Playground supplies and equipment, I know that went down. We overspent a little bit later on my team, but it's un-audited, but I know if you drop the thing down to ten thousand, I'll bang with you.
Um, just, I probably gonna have to get, uh, I have to get some more wood chips, probably maybe for Wall Street, but other than that, it's just, um, I gotta, the fence is fixed this year, um, up, up top and bottom, just been fixing this and that, but other than that, it's, it's rocking and still fresh this year.
That was a giant pile of wood chips on Wall Street.
That was only about twenty-five yards too, and spread all that out. I've got a hundred yards, that was a lot. Town guys helped me a lot, they got front loader, we did, they dumped it out, and I dragged it, raised and did it by hand, I was tired before that. Okay, any further questions? Correct. Okay, good luck to Andy. We go, eleven o'clock, do the night bowling.
Eleven.
That's okay, they don't go to the ball, well, all controls.
Okay, the listeners?
Sure.
Thanks, Paul.
Apologize for being late, I had a prior meeting, which is a...
So there's some income on page two, bottom of page two.
The two thousand dollars is what the state gives every year. Basically, we take that money, we put it away until we do a townwide appraisal. And that's what really funds the townwide appraisal. And by putting that, those funds away, last year, we, or two years ago when we completed it, they did it in-house with very few complaints, very few grievances of, basically almost none compared to ten years or twelve years prior, that we were up in the initially four hundred and fifty grievances that went to the listeners, of which two hundred and four came to VCA. So it was a very, very successful one, and that's really how you pay for it.
So then the expenses are on page five.
So, let me talk about the wages.
Sure.
So the small decrease in wages is an actual, the Camilla works twelve hours per week while each of the Pauls work sixteen, and based on their actual pay, um, their dollars per hour, based on those hours, also Camilla does not work as many weeks as they do, we will estimate a decrease in the salary.
So overall, the budget's, it's up four hundred dollars, and really that's a decrease in income. And if you look at, back on page two, every year we had budgeted either five or eight hundred dollars going all the way across, and we're bringing in less than a hundred dollars. This year, basically, we went from, last year where we budgeted five hundred dollars income to fifty dollars income. Other than that, it's really a level-funded budget.
And then Main Street software, that's the monthly, that's six thousand dollars, that's the monthly. That's for all of those monthly expenses?
That's like a year, that's their Microsoft, which is state-supported, and it's made to the grand list, that's their memory support, and, um, yeah, their main street software.
And the state is looking at other providers of that, but they haven't come there yet. I don't know if you're, I don't really know.
Yeah.
But I just know that's coming.
Yeah, there is a possibility of that coming. And I think the state will, will be going up to bid for that.
They've been talking about it for a while.
Yeah, I think in the summer, this coming summer is where they're talking, maybe, yeah.
Because we're really tight to whatever.
Whatever the state says is what we're talking to.
Yeah.
Any questions, early?
Great.
Great, thank you.
So now we get to the Opera House. And we're in page three is revenues, remember this is the first year, wait, first year, sorry? That the Opera House is in the general fund.
Right.
It's been its own fund, but now they're pulling it out of the general fund.
Thanks for welcoming us here.
Yeah. So page three is income, which again is level funded. We increased income from last year to the current year pretty substantially. And so far, we're on target, but we don't want to be unreasonable and protect something that we're not going to make, so we don't want to raise that for next year.
Yeah, part of the increase has been the specialty concession items that we've been selling, the two hundred ounce popcorn tubs, every time we open them, we'll be, um, some of the more pricey concession items.
Right, because we raised prices last year, except for the triple up. We did not raise that, and we never will raise that. People don't know that, that's not... Yeah, so we're... And the ticket price?
Ticket price is not an area...
Is still five dollars, so we want people to know that too.
Yeah, we feel that's our major selling point, is the ticket price triple up. We have so many people who come to us and say, I can't believe that you can do this. You do it as the town wants us to.
Right, so I know what we're getting more strict is on advertisements. You can see, last year, it's forty-one hundred dollars, this year we're expecting to make seventy-five hundred. It's a good deal still for the advertisers, but we're just getting better at invoicing folks and selling advertisements.
I'm trying to get out there a little bit more popular with businesses, just let people know, make them aware of what we offer. And I think the other area that we're talking about is the classic film series. We greatly increased that this summer to Wednesday and Thursday every week, and made it a point to really press for the sponsorship. As long as I'm able to continue getting the sponsorship, just about everything we do there is positive. Sponsorship pays with licensing fee, so the ticket prices that we charge come to us, and we still get our fifty percent of every concession that we sell. The other, the other thing that we added, that we've been trying, is a Tuesday matinee. We started that, I believe, during Lion King this summer. It was suggested to us that it might be a good idea for, for parents with young children. We decided to continue it throughout the year, and I've gotta say, Down in Abbey has just been amazing numbers. We did seventy the first Tuesday down in Abbey, and we just did forty-nine today. It really seems to be catching on to the crowd that doesn't like driving after Derek. So it's, it's still, it's initial stages, but we're hoping that, that we can continue that and move on to work, so we're gonna try to add another one somewhere down in there.
Yeah, and it's good, and we're doing it in a way to minimize the impact on the merchants too.
Yes, yeah.
So we're encouraging people to park elsewhere.
Yeah, and I had a discussion with each and every one, not each and every, sorry, many of the merchants downtown, to ask them what day worked best for them, what time worked best for them, and we, with adjustments, you know, did, did our best to beat Down in Abbey and still do well for us.
What time is the Tuesday at noon?
Two o'clock. So even with the time change, the people were able to get out before it turned dark, which is, you know, certainly the seniors crowd is, that's a positive for them, they like to not have to drive after Derek.
Page twelve is the exception.
Yeah, we should just point out the theater rental. That's a lot, a lot. So we're, that's a, a lot of...
Right, right, but we did do a, well, to make sure it's a second live event this year, two thousand, two thousand and twenty, we did, we just got done with the Secret Garden for two weeks, and they are going to do, I believe, when we're in Shrek March, the rental there. I believe we estimate it will be between ten and eleven thousand, between the two of them, and then the other live events that we handle, musical, the sort of society is, is doing a fundraising there on the fourteenth, so rentals from that, we expect to make up to the eighteen thousand.
We had a little bump in the road last March with the staging and stuff. Are we gonna have that problem looking at this year?
We're, we're working with them, we're working with them.
I'm hoping they'll work with us.
Yeah, well, and as far as, if recently is, is any mitigation, David and his crew have been in there cleaning it up, clearing it up. I have a full line inspection, yeah, because they still have everything in there, but we'll do a full line inspection, we'll discuss who David, what we still want done, correct? And, you know, they, they seem very motivated to work with us.
Yeah, I want to see that again, I keep you in mind last year.
Hopefully not.
It wasn't supposed to happen.
Right.
And Eagle Mania was, well, went well?
Eagle Mania went well, yes, yeah. Musical events in there, I've been speaking to several free local promoters, trying to get more Thursday night musical events in there. Eagle Mania, we had over three hundred people on Thursday night, which just is a fabulous number for us. I know a previous promoter did the same thing last January, and we had two hundred and fifty in there. So it certainly is a venue that can be used and can be attractive to the audience. I thought with Ray Suko, who is doing promotion as well again, not just he's on reverse, and he's done that, and he's expressing interest in doing a couple events in there this year too. So hopefully the feelings will be between six and twelve, musical or comedy or some similar type acts in there in the upcoming year.
But overall, other than that, it's the film series.
Yes.
So I'll make sure that we, you know, I like...
Not separate, right, right. Yeah, we'll continue to give it to the crew.
So then the expenses are page twelve.
Do you keep track of live performance concession income?
Yes, 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 we do.
Is that available?
Um, we don't have...
I have the numbers, hold on, I have the numbers right here. I was just adding that up earlier.
We have to find like spreadsheets from the last...
Yeah, I don't have that many up yet.
We can send out to you all, and then once we, you may want to just check these before we...
Well, much rough.
Where's that go? Just in, um...
Concession.
Yeah, in all, but it'd be nice to put that number next to the rental. So for income, so you could get a better idea of what...
So our last live show, which was Chicago...
Well, the last one before this.
The before this, because we have compiled the numbers, she had, we estimated it was about fifteen thousand dollars all in per, between the rental and the concessions that were sold and all of that.
Fees for the personnel?
Yep, fees for the personnel that we recruit.
Okay.
And the Opera House committee is, they've been analyzing the income of different events too, and got a break into spreadsheets, so it's pretty happy.
That line I read that you're looking at in the income for the theater is just the fee for the rental.
So you said fifteen in concessions from...
No, fifteen thousand, which is rental, concessions, we'll be billed for cleaning, staff, concessions. And then the dollar, the ticket, the fee, so.
Yeah, I mean, I do think it's safe to say we're not going to realize that for the Secret Garden.
Yeah, and we didn't think we would, it's a different kind of show, it's not a big blockbuster musical.
So what about that one dollar ticket, I had a discussion last year, maybe that wasn't enough for...
Yeah, the issue was on, is it the first two hundred tickets?
So the show before Chicago, the first two hundred tickets, we didn't get paid for. Um, Chicago, we were paid for every ticket that was sold.
The Secret Garden, has your part?
Right, because that was more of a risky show.
Yeah, and we just, it shouldn't be us taking the risk. You know, we're providing the facility, et cetera, I just, I don't, I don't think we should be taking that risk.
Well, they wouldn't do it, I mean, it's not a risk, it's just that, that if they don't, if they have a particular show that nobody comes to, and they, there's nothing to share, you know, or two hundred people come to...
What we're discussing is not once there is a share or is the, the dollar, I mean, the large discussion here last year, whether that was enough.
We, we financed, we looked at it from all financial perspectives, and for a big show like Chicago, we made a lot of money, and for a smaller show, it's still in our best interest financially to collect a dollar after so many tickets. And if they do better than they anticipate, then we get paid more, but, but from, if you analyze it financially, it's still well worth it for us to, to not do it.
I still think it's a little, a little lower efficiency.
Well, we're, it's still new too.
Yeah, and they're paying the rental, right.
Yeah, I don't realize that, but...
And, and we get the couple of concessions.
You're getting a pretty good deal. How about, do we ever get recompensated where they're set up behind, I mean, sometimes they're, they're pulling your sets and stuff?
We get paid, we have every day that they're rehearsing, that they're in the building, that we're setting up, and that we, you know, we have staff, and they pay for the staff time. They pay us for the staff time.
So heat, electricity and stuff is kind of thrown under the carpet, and, I mean, they're there all day playing with, with sets. I mean, some places also I've heard where they, they say, you gotta wait to put your sets up, and they come in, they prep that, they... I mean, some places also I've heard where they, they say you gotta wait to put your sets up and they come in, they prep that, fix the sets.
Well, he is calling regardless.
Most of what I've seen now, they construct them onsite right there, so it's tied up, you know.
This time they did, right?
Well, they found a primary show that I can see. They did Chicago, they were building sets when you came in from.
Well, I guess the one before that, they did more offsite. Yeah, and we've talked to them, if, if we need them to move, they move or they, they don't start until after we need it.
Certainly this, this fall, we had, well, Eagle Mania, was it?
Right, right.
And there was some discussion about what we would do to the stage. Making sure, would have preferred to have been in the building and we didn't feel it was in the best interest of the live event to have them build and you put sub four and, and they didn't. So, and that was, what about a month before The Secret Garden?
So how's our repairs and stuff that are coming on there? Are we getting any detrimental effect from them doing that sort of stuff, drilling holes, I mean, putting, extending out the stage and all that stuff?
I, I did find screws and staples after Chicago, which were pulled out. Certainly screws in, in the stage floor will over time cause deterioration. We haven't had to make any repairs yet.
No, but somewhere down the line, it's gonna.
Somewhere down the line.
It's gonna be back for us somewhere.
Yes. Yeah.
Hey, any other questions for?
Well, that's, that's the. I think we should talk about improvements or just system or facility improvements. What we wanna do, and this is with working with the Bellis Bellis Opera House Committee, is prioritize what needs to be done in the, in the theater to make both movies and live events work better. We did the lights last year, remember the LED lights? This year, we'll probably do that extra pole. The popcorn machine is highlighted here. What we wanna do is have a multi-year program, which we don't have yet. And then what we can do is work with Eric Fox and, and Main Street Guards and come up with art, a good proposal for an arts grant, which are, they have some, they have some great grants and it's especially appealing to them if it's public and private, working together for some, some real serious improvements, because the projector that we like is huge, the 4K projector. We didn't even put a price on it because it's not something that.
The popcorn machine is state grant?
My estimation, from what we looked at, to replace the size popcorn machine that we have, the gold metal products is between 12 and 15,000 dollars.
Yeah.
What was the thing about the projector and older laptop? What was that, when you remember, were you looking for an older laptop, ran a different system run?
Sure, I think that was for the ads, right?
Yeah, so the.
If you replaced them?
The projector that we had that does the ads, the ad, you know, brought it up with a really old computer. And so actually, the fire department bought a laptop and then we're gonna move funds, so the Opera House pays, but it's a used computer, so the, you know, cost of it. But it doesn't need a new computer and so.
But that would, that's in preparation for, for your 4K?
That's because as of.
That's for our slideshow events.
As of January 1st.
That's what would run if you get a new projector or that needs.
That's what would run the slideshow events.
But as of January 1st, the software on the computer, which is literally like over the anything I've seen, it's probably over the mini. We, the software will no longer work, we cannot use it at all, but that doesn't mean that it can do. So we found a good way.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the 4K.
Right, right, but I remember, I thought that was a solution to something if we could find.
Yeah, it was a solution to keep an ad going, which is important.
Very important.
Yeah.
And the 4K projector was set at about 100 and a quarter?
I believe my New England theatrical services quoted 75,000 for a new one and possibly if we find a used one, which there are used ones out there, it would be less than half that.
But we're not proposing that now, but we'd like to do.
I was trying to avoid a lot of this at the 11th hour. I was here when we went through the first digital projector expense. So, I mean, it's something we ought to be thinking about, so we don't get surprised.
Oh yeah, that's who we are, that's why I brought it up, yeah.
Hey, you have a comment?
Yeah, actually, I was just gonna ask Rick, is the 75,000 for upgrading the projector to 4K or for a new projector? Sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I was under the impression it's for a new projector.
Okay, so it's not for upgrading like the one we have for 4K?
There is the potential for upgrading the one for 4K, yes.
But, but probably not 75,000.
Probably not 75,000, okay, right. Yeah, so using the projector that we currently have and adding to upgrade it.
Would be less.
Would be much less.
Yes, sorry, that's what the point of.
Is that a possibility, I mean, is that a good move or is that, are we kind of just hope holding it inevitable?
Well, and Ed can probably speak to this as well as I can, I mean, the projector we have there does have a lifespan.
Yeah, I don't think we use it as much as though as, like, you know, the multiplexes do. I don't think that projector runs as often, so the lifespan that they're probably estimating is probably actually longer for the amount we use it.
Yeah, we're doing about 11 shows a week at the moment.
Yeah, maybe a lot.
Maybe only just two hours.
Yeah.
Maybe looking at 22 hours, whereas I'm sure a place that is doing three times that.
I mean, from what I've seen, the projector seems to run fine. The only problems we have once in a while is, I think, the computer software that runs some of the stuff in there, you know, gets glitches like any computer stuff does, so I think the projectors.
One of the problems with this was, to studio, you mentioned was changing their.
Right, there, one, it was actually a classic movie group of movies that we were trying to get and they refused us because we did not have a 4K projector.
Yeah, like we can't play any of the Bond movies because they're.
Which, which hurts us.
Unless you have 4K projector, they won't rent them to you.
Right, yeah. And, you know, so there is the possibility that more studios could move to that in the future.
In other words, they want their movie to be presented in the best possible light.
Right.
Just trying to draw back on, actually, three years ago, we talked about.
Yes.
Appreciate you staying around the top of that, Rick, mentally, I appreciate that, I know I liked it.
You know, the classic movies have a special place in our heart.
Yeah.
We are one of the few theaters that I know in this area that does that sort of thing. So it has an audience that really appreciates it.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Rick.
Okay.
This is, so we have more stuff for you. Yeah, let's do those. This is an updated version. Gets more facts every time we hand it out, so hopefully you won't find errors, but do let us know. So now the tax needed to not include equipment, that was a mistake that I made, but these general fund numbers are, are correct, or the fund numbers are correct, okay? Any questions on that or?
Oh, I just barely got it.
All right, well, I mean, I. Yeah, the, the, the two total numbers are the same. So, and then, again, the point of this one was to show there's different ways to impact the tax rate and we have more capacity on the raising of the value. That's why that error has gotten bigger, because that's a more accurate representation. Because there's more capacity to go up than there, than that capacity to go down, although we can do both. Okay, and then the next, the other page that you have are the fund balances in the general fund. You asked for this, so this is of today?
It's the FY19.
Oh, okay, so coming into this fiscal year. So general fund balance, 681, 451. And then once the planned deductions are done in the current fiscal year.
Yeah, we're looking at FY19.
But this.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, at the bottom part of it, the $50,000 transfer that's in the budget and the unsafe building reserve, the meeting house reserve, then the available fund balance is 561, 451. And then remember that our auditor was recommending between 16 and 20%. So this is.
One too many zeros here, I mean, you.
Oh, man.
That'd be nice.
Wait, sorry. No, this is the weird thing. That is our, that is the value, that's the market value of the town property.
Before, when we gave it to you, you, you had to take, you had to divide by 100.
Right, oh, okay.
But we thought it was better to see the whole dollar value, made it easier.
Right, so. Yeah, no, but, but good, good point, so I should have explained that. So the, the value of all the town property, the market value is 467 million. And so remember that the hydro is 103 million, so obviously they're a critical contributor. But then the market value increased last year by 9 million approximately, so that's the 2% increase. And a third of that was from, but then others were solar fields and single family housing. Homes are increasing in price.
And on the back of the general fund balance is the highway, with the.
I didn't know. Yep, no, go ahead, so this is.
Did everybody get a front and back to their?
Yep. Oh, looks like. Here, just come in. Okay, so then this is the highway, same thing. The FY19 ending fund balance, that would have been a year last July, 923,000 using the emergency, funding for the emergency generator and for a light part improvements that are paid for by the town. So available fund balance, 563,000, and again, that's within the ranges, actually it's above 23%, which is actually higher than is necessary. So, the, yeah, can we, I wanna talk about debt service real quick? Because in looking at our tax rate, a big reason for the high number, the high amount of our tax rate is debt service. Our debt service is 17% of our, of our budget, which is huge. And so what we wanna show you is just the scheduling of debt service. So the two sheets you have, the, the one with the numbers on it is, shows you what each of those segments represents. So that, I don't remember, I think it starts two years ago. I'll wait till she changes that, but the, you wanna do the bar chart first, the timeline? Okay, so the, the gray bar on the bottom, the gray bar on the bottom is the library. Okay, the library bond, the two.
These actually quarterly, so.
Right, this, this sheet has the numbers that explain these debt items.
So if you're just looking at the library bond, which is the gray at the bottom, that is going to be number two here, so it gives you a more detailed description of the library bond. And then also you can see how much it was and how much we had and how much we actually paid of it.
And what's the end date? Yeah, what's the end date?
That's, that's the end date, we have it to 2026.
Okay, so this does, so this is the end date, okay. All right, so that's library, then the next, the two purple ones are the bond that was for the theater and town hall. So the dark purple is the theater portion of that, the payment, and the light purple is the town hall portion. So you can see that ends in 2026, okay? So fire trucks are in red. If, if you read the key horizontally, then it'll match better. So the 2019 fire truck that we just bought, we'll start paying, or two of them, we'll start paying for those this year. And those are the two red, red and orange blocks, you see that start this year? Okay, so those will go to 2024. Would have been nice to be able to spread that out under, over the life of what you're supposed to do. The, the best practice in financing is to finance the, whatever the thing is for the, for its life expectancy. So if you have a truck that's in the last 20 years, which is like a.
What would you pay?
A ladder truck.
Any interest?
No, no, what you wanted, I wanna get to that actually, what you wanted to do is save up, so you don't pay, you minimize your interest. So we'll, we'll get to that. So the red is the, this, the lower red is this year's fire truck. So if you go to the, the blue is Rockaway Mills improvement, that fortunately ends in 2022. Then we have the next fire truck on top of that, the 2017 fire trucks, which we were able to finance for a long period of time. Or maybe we just postponed it, okay, so that started that year, okay. And then the town hall rec center is the beige color, which also ends in 2022. The sewer line, I believe that's water and sewer line, that's the extension to the industrial part. So that's why the town would have, would have paid for that.
That's number one on the desk.
Okay, and it's the yellow. And then two other blue ones are highway, we, we tried to color code it a bit so that the bluish colors and, colors in the blue spectrum are highway colored, so you can see the trucks integrated in the lower. So what's happening is 2021, next year, is the peak of the current debt, right? So that's just important that, that you know that. What we wanted to.
And just be adding as we move forward?
We will, but that's what, well, just, just one point I wanna make. If, if, if you go to this sheet and you look down at the bottom, at the bottom on the right, we, we got, we had this and this, I know, do we have that also? This one, or is this one included in there? Okay, at the bottom right, you see that, $899,000. Eight ninety-six, looks like eight ninety-nine.
How far on the bottom?
It's.
It's the total interest line.
Yes, total interest in the, what's general fund, it's down here.
Eight eight nine.
What's your number?
Eight nine, eight nine nine, it's, it's just under 900,000, right?
Yep.
Then look at the 101 number, that's the interest from the theater fund, it's a million dollars. It's a million dollars in interest. It's a million dollars in interest has, is being paid.
Since two thousand eleven.
For all of these things. A million dollars. And that's because we're paying for things when we buy it, we get a loan. We aren't saving before we buy something. If we could just save half before we buy something and then finance the rest, then we're, we'd save half of that amount. And plus, we make money while we're saving, because the saved funds are earning interest. So we make interest and then we don't pay interest. So there's multiple reasons to do this. Plus, then you're spreading the cost over to the people who are going to bet it from the, from the, whatever it is that you're buying. So, so what we want to do, and the next step, is to make a capital improvement program that will, instead of having the ups and the downs and then not knowing what's coming and having tax rates fluctuate according to what we buy, we have a, a long-term plan. The fire committee, fire equipment committee is, is working on this. We don't have another big fire truck purchased for a while. But the next one, or the next big one's a ladder truck, and they cost a million dollars now. So we need to start saving, even though, I think it's fifteen years away. We need to start saving for that now.
I realize that, but over the history here, if you've had capital improvement plans that were not fully funded due to the fact that it does impact the tax rate.
Well, what we do is, once we get the plan, we have a target. It would probably, I expect it would be somewhere between four and six hundred thousand annually. So instead of the, what is the total, this is almost a million dollars a year. Instead of that, we can reduce that, we, we don't know yet. But we think we would end up with something in between. That would be a reasonable amount that the town could just, just budget, and we know what it is. And, and we don't have these fluctuations.
So what we would do is, whenever we would want to either finance something or make a capital plan, we would enter the data into here, so that you guys would see. Because I think prior to this, you had a limited view of what the impact would be long-term. So we would continue to bring this out. And then, and like Wendy's saying, we don't ever want to be back up here. So between anything that we borrow for any capital plan that we put together, we are going to come up with a number with the board that is reasonable to have as our debt service and capital planning together. And you can budget for it every year, it won't change. And then you'll know when you can purchase a fire truck or you can do a capital project. But, but you, this will be updated, so that you can see the impact immediately.
And that we can do, finance, you know, proper financing, like possibly refinance this, what we've just recently purchased, so that we pay it over a longer period of time and have lower total interest.
Yep.
It, it just makes sense.
And we will just speak with the LCT to get some ideas to, to work with us to see how we can fix the seventeen percent currently.
Seventeen percent is huge, an, an amount of our budget to spend on debt service.
And we will be watching this.
You know, we've got some necessities, but we've had some people, in my opinion, that like to spend money.
That's always the case. We just did it an hour and a half ago. Spend money on planning.
Right, well, this is planning, but it's long-term planning. And it, it should bring down the tax rate over time, because right now, you know, like I said, seventeen percent is, is paying debt, and a lot of that is interest. I mean, we can probably calculate that. But a million dollars of interest over the years, too.
How many, how many years is that?
So.
A million dollars.
The million dollars has started in two thousand eleven.
That's current from two thousand eleven.
No, that's through twenty thirty-three right now.
Two thousand nine to twenty thirty-three.
Two thousand eleven to twenty thirty-three. We'll, we'll have, we need a million dollars. Just on what you have in, in this sheet.
Now, the only thing I, if we were to set up some of these funds, like you talked about capital fund, I'd want to make sure, regardless of I'm here or not, but whoever's here sitting on this board, that sort of using the term general fund, if something else came up that by law or however, if you committed it to fire equipment or highway equipment or whatever, I'd want, I'd want to see the board have the flexibility to, something just came up or is coming up, we're going to spend it on something else. I don't want to be locked in. I don't think you can move this board, be locked into all this money. You know, it's a good concept, I mean, I want to have flexibility and freedom.
Oh, the board would, and the, and the town meeting would, too.
Well, I realize that, but from what I understand, I haven't been here, but depending on how, what account you put it into, you can't touch it for anything else. For example, that is the highway fund, can you set for anything else related to the highway?
Right. That's still from the state, the state should have that.
Well, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I'd rather have a place where we have more flexibility.
Well, you would put this into the highway.
Well, I'm not saying put it in the highway fund, but that is an example.
Right, we'd have a capital improvement fund, is, is what we would do. And I think we have a lot of extra funds.
Something else came up, could we go into that, tap into that capital improvement fund? A little capital improvement? That's what I'm getting at.
Right.
I think you're going to have our thing, building your capital fund if you're taking from. You should, you should fund what you're, what you want to spend and, and let's. That's, that's what we always do, is take from somewhere else.
Well, I'm trying to look down the road, so that something else did come up we didn't anticipate, or.
Well, I understand, but.
It should change.
But then you're going to be right back up here, without the purpose of something being answered.
This is separate, it should be specific for your planning. You can't take from it, because something comes up.
But also, if the debt is lower overall, then you'll have more room, you'll have more flexibility for when things come up.
Well, yeah, debt is lower, we have more money spent, because some people may look at it, oh, you know, we were spending this anyway.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying when, when the pressure on the budget is less from debt, then you'll have more flexibility. And you still have the general reserve funds and highway funds, where we have, we're in a good position with those. We all have, we have those in a way that we have emergency, we're okay.
Correct.
Right, and maybe the distinction between operating and capital. So operating is the highway fund and the general fund, and capital would be a separate fund. And again, on to the story, get grants to, is, is if, if we show the state that we're ranging our money well.
Yeah, because they, they ask them to write that later on.
Right. Do we have a capital improvement fund any time? So we want to, it's, it's just the right thing to do. So we'll keep working on that. And it's really something that we would probably not kick in until the next, not this current fiscal year. Because we're still dealing with debt service, my debt service.
We'd want to, like, aim to start building now and presenting, so that by the time we're ready for FY twenty-three, which would only be, you know, the next budget cycle, not this one coming up for the next one, we, we wouldn't, we'd want to start to put something away and then as our debt gets reduced, and then start purchasing our stuff with the money we put away instead of borrowing, so this won't keep increasing. We'll, our goal would be to just increase this into the capital fund, wherever we decide we want to be, between like the four, six hundred thousand a year, and keep funding ourselves.
Right, and make money on it. I mean, I mean, interest rates aren't great, but something is better than negative something, you know.
Yeah, we want to pay ourselves a million dollars over the next twenty-two years.
Right, and the earlier we start, the more we get. Makes sense? All right.
Thanks. That was great.
Good. So what do you guys think about having another Saturday meeting? There isn't a lot on the, on the nineteenth meeting, is there, Wendy? But do you want to have another Saturday meeting for budget, maybe early?
Highway ready?
Sorry?
Oh.
The highway ready?
Oh, yes, yes.
That's next, that's not the one, the nineteenth, right?
Oh, that's a big comment.
Probably, you got all the paper.
Yeah, but we're not presenting it to you tonight.
Right, this is just for you guys to take home. We don't want to discuss it.
But if you have questions, we can talk about it before the meeting.
It's nice to have it so we can look through it and see.
Yeah.
But you can, for all of your questions, you imagine, I mean, it cuts a fine in the meeting.
Yeah. Right, we just don't, don't make assumptions without asking these questions. Well, no, I just, there's a couple where we have the original warrants coming for the next meeting, but. Well, hold on while we get the warrants, and I'll play for time.
What was the answer for Saturday meeting?
We could just, we can all put aside on the nineteenth, right?
Yeah, I think we decided. Yeah, but I just wanted to, you guys to think about, because it's kind of nice to have a meeting that's just budget. I, I, I'm good.
Well, I think if it's an evening, I'd be more inclined, I'd be more inclined with evening.
I agree, yeah.
I'd say it'd be more inclined at an evening than, compared with Saturday. I mean, if it's a lengthy, once a discussion, we're, I'm probably, might be better to have it for Saturday, but. I mean, like highways can be.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll get through highway, because the agenda on the nineteenth right now is just the nuisance ordinance again. Can I go ahead to that item?
Yeah, I'm just going to take, we all know that, this belongs to the again items.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's not even around past the bills. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so it'd be the second meeting of the nuisance ordinance. I had a meeting with Tom Simmons, who's handling the census in our area, and he wants to give a, a brief presentation of that to the board. His name is Tom Simmons. He actually wanted to buy a house in Bellas Falls, he really likes Bellas Falls, but he couldn't find exactly what he was looking for, but it was interesting to hear his story. And that would be maybe ten, fifteen minutes. And then the Better Roads Grant for the Hyde Hill Drain Line, and that is due to you, so that you can kind of get a preview. It's under, it's in the back of your packet, under information items. So it's due November twenty-second. So we'll bring it to you in November nineteen. But it'll be for the item that we're talking about, you know, it's, it's to replace a pipe. So if you have any, like, concerns about it, please let us know now, so that we can address those concerns in the application. We'll probably talk about stormwater district again when we go over the public works budget. But that's, so the nuisance ordinance, the census, and this Better Roads Grant are the things I have that are not the budget for the nineteenth. So there should be plenty of time, assuming that the nuisance ordinance doesn't take a lot of time.
Bill, have any items, make up on it? About the joint board, that's a couple months out.
Yeah, we said, Jane, we're, I don't know, you know, we might have something active at Walpole meeting. Maybe Hope Springs Channel, you know, with the Bible script.
Bible script, probably not, but.
The, part of the purpose of the meeting with Walpole is to craft a joint statement, actually, in the Bible script. So that, that could be on the nineteenth meeting, or it could be on the joint board meeting. Or both, even.
I think probably some of the joint evidence is on that, actually, the village is almost all over. Because of the economic impact, like, without sewer line here, if something should happen to that bridge, it would probably be a problem.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, the trustees are hired into that.
We, for warrants, I want to take up all the business. Ben.
I'll say it, Ben.
Actually, Peter, I have a free item here. I had some blanks this evening, this afternoon. I don't know if they can take care of what's the Blank Street, that area, the construction going on there. There's evidently quite a bump up there, and it's not art. At least it wasn't when I was, it was meant to be, so I don't know people that live up there that way. I guess evidently the construction going on dug down, and I guess the, the way it was mentioned to me was they probably lose the front end or rear end of the thing.
There's a Crystal Drive, that area was getting paved today. They had to dig it out to pave it, to make it out.
Which part it is.
Yeah.
That too. We'll just vote to approve them, and then we'll sign the three sign.
And then the other item was, it came, again, it came with trustee leave, but it's come up. Evidently are asleep with the waypoint. There's some people that, evidently there's a person, individual down there that's spending nights there. One of the pictures, I think, that he's. So, I mean, you know, I don't want this to turn into, you know, like the Brown Road Transportation Center, where they, we got some people hanging out down there in all the town. Is there a specific statute that says that we can't move these people along?
No, we have found in other locations, we have, we have found other housing for them, and we have found help for them. So we are doing that.
With my understanding, again, the individuals are still there.
Yeah, I don't know if that was one of the people that we helped, or any people. Don't have to take the help that we offer.
Right, they don't, but is there, is there a specific state statute that says they can stay there?
We can't personally make them leave.
Unless you have.
It's a common place.
So I can come down here and stack out the library, the, the theater down here, you can with me?
There's, there are things we can do.
Okay, because there's, there's some people in this community that aren't happy, because they want to get that type of.
Go ahead, go ahead, I don't think anybody.
Plus, we don't want to, you know, all right? And then, you question, before we do the meeting on the road, there are also, I think, at one point, the opiate, the attorney general, the doctor. My understanding is the town, but I think it's something more so that the village of Bellas Falls should be involved in, because they maintain the police department in the jurisdiction. And from a village standpoint, being a village and a town taxpayer, we get a problem everywhere with the village police department, we're usually the one that deals with that, so.
Yeah, they, they should be, they can be pointed to. This, this was just to opt out.
Well, I, but I think, I realize.
But I'll send it to the village, too.
It should have been something with the priority of that, it should have been to the village.
So there's village money and family, it's its scope.
Yeah.
If, if the money is distributed, if they've calculated, the village, the village would receive and what's counted wrong.
The problem is born by the village taxpayers, we've had to pay the one point two million dollar police department.
Right, and I mean, this point is just a question of whether we opt out of the.
Well, I realize.
When it gets to the point where that money is distributed, then there's another discussion, I think, about.
I realize that, but it looks like the village wasn't even included in this initially.
You're talking about planning email?
Oh, I'm talking just about the, the opiate initiative, this is currently taking place in Montpelier with the attorney general.
I mean, I got it in the board management, so I mean, you probably got it at the trustee, so the rest of your board probably got it up.
And I'll send it to the village before their meeting. I mean, I'll send it to you here, because of your meeting, so for the list, so I'll send it to the village before their meeting.
Do you have a thought? That is all. All right, we have an motion to approve order of building warrants. Motion to approve order of building warrants. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I don't know if they would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll hold on to it. Period. Need for executive section? Do we need any executive section now?
I doubt we have any one.
Okay.
Haven't we talked about it?
I believe there's one, a few contracts. So if somebody wants to make the motions here, if somebody wants to make the motions. I'll make the motion, the strike board entered into an executive session to discuss contractual, contracts, where per mature general knowledge, we clearly place the use of, instance penalties substantial disadvantage, and, um, I don't believe we're inviting anybody else in, that's correct?
Yeah, it's time for having a manager.
And the finance director.
Are we the finance director and the manager?
Why would we be the finance director?
Well, that's what I thought, I thought, uh, so it's just a manager.
I would think, if someone would be.
And invite the manager in.
Second.
We need the executive session now.
We're setting, we can vote.
One vote, aye, one vote, all votes in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, name.